You're standing.
You don't have to be high about it.
You don't have to be high about it.
What's that starting?
Standing in the twenty.
When we get the starting. I'll have to turn it down. I'm turning it.
Your desk calling?
That's my package.
Do you have a desk calling? Is that what it is? Did he teach his son school? And she's got me too, battery that can blow. She needs, she's got, she had to take her phone and put it on the go.
Yeah, I, I do it in church. I had, I had three of those.
She's like, I don't have a battery, it's not out here.
She broke hers. It's cut that open.
Yeah.
And it's always about her now. They've been sending her up to the church. Trying to get a prayer. And they ain't saying the other.
No, no.
So we take them to work and just get one on her plate.
For she got, I think. I have to bring right, I, I've had them.
It did.
Yeah.
Yeah. You took some.
So that I want to.
I play that.
Probably have a right.
I just got that. Got the little stick that you got a good type.
I appreciate her.
He takes that shot for one.
Oh yeah.
The ball's here. He's got ball going on that thing there.
I know. They balling.
A ton there. Can't be cutting up out there.
That's not bad.
Is that it, your part?
Um.
Um, how do you think so? Is it back behind there? Woody, Woody's not coming. We need somebody else. Right. He just, he didn't, he's studying.
He's nothing.
He's studying, he's stuck.
They don't.
He's got bad hands. He's got batteries.
Usually.
He's trying to be honest. Well, that's.
He's using this.
Oh no.
I almost had a week there, had better for a position.
And this is nothing bad. This is very, very, a lot of things. She's like, hey, don't be home at ten thirty. He'd be asleep, he'd be asleep in his room. He'd be up all night. Turn your microphone.
Oh, Raymond, you give invocation, please sir.
Father, we, Father, we thank you for another day that you allowed us to be around this one more day. Father, we thank you for being Jesus and taking care of all last night. And when it come down to the end of our journey for you to call and for us to answer. Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I declare the United States of America into the Republic for which of stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rose call, please.
Here.
Here.
Ginger Stewart, here. Wendell Walker.
Here.
Jane Durning.
Here.
Stan Moran.
Here.
Sean Simpson.
Here.
Del Carruthers.
Here.
Raymond Hatton.
Here.
Jim Ed Ransom.
Here.
And Shane Hamilton.
Yep.
We have a quorum.
Sorry, everybody. Alright, so everyone had a chance to read over the previous minutes. From last month, uh, February tenth. Motion from challenge to accept, uh, meetings from last meeting.
Second.
Second, but they all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion taken. Now we got, uh, public comment, uh, from Miss, uh, Laura's Allison.
I am Laura's Allison and I do have some concerns. And my first concern is, there's a tree down off of Vassar Lane. And this tree, I don't know the person that owned the property there, but the tree has this open trunk. And if the wind blows really, really hard, it's gonna either blow that tree into the street, or it's gonna blow it across the street to the young man that live over there's home. And it may even hit his car, cause his car sits further to the street than.
About where is it down there?
All I know is it's on Vassar Lane. Uh.
Is it?
At the end of the corner.
Pleasant?
You, you know where Pleasant Drive is?
Yeah.
It's on the end of, uh, Vassar and Pleasant. You begin to go into Pleasant to the right, to the left, when you get off of Vassar.
Okay.
Yeah. And my next concern is, there is need for a grocery store in this town. As a matter of fact, there's a need for quite a few grocery stores in this town. When I was born and raised here in Lenoir, I won't tell you how long ago it was, but they had seven grocery stores here. Not one, not two, but seven. Walmart is not a grocery store. It's an all-inclusive, which means there's all kinds of stuff in there you can buy. Clothes, equipment, all of that. We need a grocery store, like Krogers or, or Piggly Wiggly used to be in England. We definitely not need a grocery store. And, and I'm petitioning all of you people that are sitting on this board and others, get out and look for something that we can build a we, I didn't say you guys by yourselves. Cause we are all here to pitch in to find something that we can put a store into. We need a store in this town. If you say town, that's what it is, a town, not a city. It's a town. Also, there's a need for growth in this town. Not this city, this town. We need to have factories, back in my day, there was a Kelwood, Jacuzzi, Sears, all of those stores were here. Now, what happened to the industry?
Right.
We, we need that back in this town, so that we can grow again. There are young people coming up, where are they gonna go? What are they gonna do? If you wanna send them away, so that they can go someplace else, most of them will do that. But we need the growth from those young people to flourish here. So I'm asking all of you on the board, let's get together here in Lenoir and do some good stuff for this town. Make it a city. I don't hear anybody coming.
I agree with you.
Do not disagree. All right, crazy guy, thank you, that is all I have to come.
Thank you very much. And I'll get down.
Remember the seven grocery stores. I'm with you.
Well, I'll get, I'll, uh, get by and look at that tree tomorrow and see what we can do with it.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. Alright, state of the city. Tell you some of the things, uh, this last year, we used, uh, three hundred and eighty-seven tons of gravel, one ton of sand, ninety-five bags of concrete, fifty-three point thirty-six tons of asphalt patching, uh, riprock, about seventy-nine tons, topsoil thirteen tons, cornerstone, which is spray, was fifty-five gallons. Uh, signs, we, there's a twelve-foot post, we put fifty-two in, sixty stop signs, eighty-plus street signs, and a hundred and twenty brackets. And we're continually, till we cover the whole town with new street signs. Forest tile work, which is pipe, we had nine hundred and five feet of twelve-inch pipe, forty feet of eighteen-inch pipe, a hundred and twenty feet of twenty-four inch, uh, eight couplers for twelve inch, and eight drain lids for eighteen inch. We had, uh, buildings here, last year, we had three million, seven hundred and three thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twen- forty-five cents, is what the buildings cost that we give permits to last year. And, uh, hope we beat that this year. Um. Want y'all to be patient a minute, um. I've been saying a long time, it's hard to be tactful and be honest. You don't wanna bash anybody, you don't, I mean, but, I want people to understand, they wanna know why we're not putting stuff more on Facebook, or, you know, being more, let people know what's going on, and, some of y'all have heard this, it's, but I feel like people should know, we're having to fix mistakes so much and go backward instead of forward. I would love to know how far, far we would be now, if it wasn't for this. And, just to go over stuff, and like y'all, some of y'all have heard this time after time. You know, our sol- solar panels out there, we pay a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars a year, and they produce seventy-something thousand dollars. Then we have to pay a group to manage them for us, cause if they're not working properly, they're not even gonna do that good, you know? But, and I know it's a twenty-year note, and they tell me they, we probably get another ten or twelve years out of the panels. So, what could you do with seventy thousand dollars a year? And, same as the concession stand here at the ballpark, I know a lot of y'all weren't here, we've got seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a concession stand. And there's trouble out there now. Have, there's a lot of work that needs to be done.
That's a long way from the two hundred and fifty we thought four years ago.
Well, I understand.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't have been that if it hadn't been for the disability stuff. But, you know, that took us, what, four years? We paid it off last year. And, I just found out our wastewater ponds out here are out of compliance. And, according to our engineers, we're looking at about five hundred thousand to fix it. And that didn't happen overnight, that's probably, I don't know. I was, I wasn't here, but, you know, that's, that's, that's why, Miss Al, it's hard to move forward, for having to pay for all this. And it's mistakes that was made. And it, and then our water and sewer lines. Y'all worked my butt off raising twenty-one million dollars nearly, to have water and sewer here, and we're fixing it every week, aren't we? How many thi- how many things have we fixed on brand new stuff? Probably two hundred and fifty?
More than that count.
And he's the one that fixes it all, on brand, stuff we shouldn't have had to look at for twenty, thirty years. We're having to throw good money after bad. And, you know, but the engineers, nobody looked out for us that much. And now we're having to pay for it. And I ca- that's what, can you imagine where we would be if it wasn't for all this? And I'm not even finished. I mean, I wish everybody would come to my office, I can show you on paper every bit of it. And it's, it really makes me sick. Cause, the twelve years that I was here, I didn't have none of this. Because a small town, it's ha- it's hard in any town, but when you get behind and make mistakes in a small town, what a cavity or a con- a conway, any of them could make right in a few months. It takes us a few years to get our feet back under us. And that's what makes it hard, cause we don't bring in enough tax money to fix it in a few weeks or a few months. We're in a hole for years. And we're coming out of it faster than I thought, but I didn't know there was this much to fix. I honestly thought I'd be better off, my, after my first year than we are now. But we're getting there. And, just like the police station, when they closed it three and a half years ago, a lot of people didn't even know it was closed. But it was closed, they said it was a liability. To me, it's a liability to not have one.
That's right.
They're here to protect our citizens, and, that's, they make life here safer, not making it a liability. If you're that scared, why don't you lock yourself in your house and don't ever come out? Maybe nothing will happen to you. But you're not too safe at home now, li- like you were thirty, forty years ago. And, you know, to send a letter to the state saying you're closing, now we're not grandfathered in, so they made it harder for us to open.
And the reason was what?
It was a liability.
Okay.
Now, I wasn't here, I don't know, you can blame whoever you want to, but I just know, and I told people we was gonna open it back, oh, you'll never open that jail. I said, well, you can settle in your, well, and watch. Uh, to me, when you start closing your jail and start doing all, you give up. Hell, if it's supposed to be easy, anybody to do it, you've got to work for it. Nothing's easy, life's not easy. You've got to work for anything you want. And just cause it's a little hard, you can't throw your hands up, I'm done. What the hell does it? It's hard for me not to say more than I am. But, and our water and sewer lines, you know, I told you, when, hell, we got a good sample sitting here. He had four houses in a row over there, they had to completely redo three sewer lines. Just at his place, and that was in two blocks. And they was all over town. And I, I will say, there was a couple of contractors here, they'd done a good job, anywhere they worked, you don't have to look. But anywhere else the other ones worked, we're finding stuff, hell, he just told you, too numerous to count. What the hell does that tell you? You know, man, it's just a slap in the face, it makes me sick. And I, you know, I can't do what I like to do, but.
I mean, the engineer, I'm sorry, man, the engineers were paid a million dollars to oversee this project.
That's my point exactly. And if they weren't doing it, the city should have hired somebody.
Was this Bond?
Yeah, which, they're no longer here.
Yeah.
But that's why.
Yeah. He came to see us a couple times, you know the trouble we had down there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they jumped on your husband.
Yeah, they just, they cut our.
What do you think would have happened?
Line off.
What do you think would have happened if I'd have been here? You know?
Well, none of it would, none of it would have happened, I don't think, no.
I never had any trouble with them, cause I was standing on their shoulder all the time, watching. I told them before I left, if you throw one shovel of dirt on that, you'll get out there and get it off. Cause if I'm paying you millions of dollars, I wanna see it, you're covered up when I tell you to clean it up. Covered up. And, you know, the, you know, the ponds getting out of compliance, that's,
That's an important thing.
There's no excuse, yeah.
We gotta be there.
And it's not, it's not your money, why don't you take care of it? And some of the equipment we bought, our leaf and limb machine, we spent more on its repair than it cost new. I mean, I, you know. I could go on for a while, but I don't want to keep y'all here. Uh, but priority was out the window. You know, I try to use simple thing to explain people, just say you've got a roof that's leaking. Are you gonna go in and put new floors in your house and paint your walls if your roof's leaking? No, you're gonna fix your roof.
That's right.
I mean, it's, it's all about priority, especially in a small town. You know, it's our job to take every dollar that we get from our citizens, and take as good a care for it and stretch it as far as we can, and get the most good out of it that we can possibly get. That's our job. And, it, that's why all this makes me crazy.
I hate we don't have a local paper anymore, a lot of people.
Well, I know.
People need to know this.
And.
They need to know this.
I know, and that's, it's like I said, if I stepped on your toes, or if I hurt anybody feeling, I'm sorry, but, the truth, the damn truth. You can come by and look at papers anytime you want, we can lay it all out in there on the table and you can look at it. But, that's, but Miss Allison, I agree with every word you said, but it's this right here. You know what we could have built with this? I mean, you're talking about, a lot of money. Probably hundreds and hundreds of thousands, maybe two or three million, I don't, you know. It's hard to say, and we're still finding stuff all the time, so I don't know where it's gonna end. But, it's, it's hard when you're having to go back and fix brand new stuff. I can't move forward and, you know, like I want to. And we're still doing it, just not as fast as I want to. But I, I promise you, we're working hard every day. We just got that grant, I don't think he was here, we got a grant for five hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars for our water treatment plant, a new variator. We got that half-million dollar grant to fix the sewers over on Harrison Brown and Thomas Circle, all the way to Hicks. Because they left that out. I, well, I ain't getting into that either, but Milton addition, and none of that was touched. After they done, come down Vassar when I was here, and then I left, I don't know why the other didn't get done. But, all the way from the radio tower to Hicks Street, didn't touch anything, or sewer, they put water lines in. But, I don't know the reason, but I know we've played for a lot of mistakes. I know intersections, it was dug up eight and nine times. Well, you think they wasn't paying for it, we were. I had the, I, when you have engineers telling you, they come in ready to get their butt eat out, and nobody even ask any questions or said anything, they just give them another three or four hundred thousand dollar. Uh. It, it's, it's hard to swallow, it really is. And, I can promise you, I'll take care of your money ten times more than I take care of my own. I wanna do the best for everybody that lives here. I want to see you have the best, I want the best police department, fire department, ballpark, any, anything we can get, I want the best. I'd love to have every town our size go to bed dreaming at night to be like us. That's what I want. And, you know, I've lived here all my life, every day of it, and I just hate to see stuff like I just read off, that should have never happened. And, and this, like I said, that's not all of it, that's just some of the big stuff. But, I can promise you, we're making it better, and I'm gonna do everything I can to straighten things out and see the things get done the right way, I promise you. But, uh, I know right now, we've got to get off the bed. This, right now, we've got, the duplex is being built across from Marty Mart, they're gonna end up building, what, ten or eleven? I think, they're doing three at a time, but they're gonna end up with ten or eleven, I can't remember. Um, they just built the house on, just give them the final walkthrough on Thomas Circle, and then they're fixing that burnout there beside it. And the man that just built the new one bought a corner lot back behind there, and he building another brand new house. I've got, uh, just finished a new duplex over on Des Mews, uh, we've got, uh, I've got to go ahead on the water line from the end of the walking trail to Pack Road, for them to start building houses out where the golf course was. Uh, every time I'm building several houses, I don't know how long, but they're looking at quite a few hundreds of houses. And, there's fifteen, twenty acres over, if you know where Gina Cox's houses is, behind her. Their engineers are looking at it right now, to finish that development, which would be quite a few houses. Um, well, we've got to have people building here that's not from here, we've got, three of the builders aren't from here, and people building the duplexes aren't from Lenoir. Uh, we've got a lot of good things going on, I hear Sharks is coming where the KFC Taco Bill was. I don't know when they're opening, uh, but, um. But I know when this gets going out on eighty-nine, there'll be a lot of things happening out there. So, should be starting the water line, we about ready to bid that out, so that should be done pretty quick. We're fixing to rebid the sewer line. over on Brown Street. We should have that done this summer. I was hoping to do it last year, but they come in, bids come in three hundred something thousand higher than we expected. That's how crazy prices are on stuff. Um, but we've got a lot of building going on. We've got a lot. They're fixing a bit, they're fixing to pave Highway thirty-one from the red light all the way to BB. Probably sometime mid-April. Um, is there anything I missed? I can't think of. Can't think of anything else. But anyway, we've got a, a big year we're looking for. I mean, we're getting everything straightened out, uh, hopefully, I will save that for the chief, but we, we got a lot of good things going, and y'all just be patient with us, and we're gonna make everything better. We're, I just want people to know where we been. And it's not an excuse, but I feel like people need to know. Because it's your money same as mine. It's all of our money. And I don't like the mistakes that's been made, and we're gonna straighten them out soon as we possibly can. Some of it, like the solar panels, we'll be losing money on them. They, they won't ever pay for themselves.
There is no out in any of the contracts or anything.
No, you know, what they claim they'll do, well, if that was in writing, it had to been out over.
That's what I started to say, you know, nothing that's.
No, and I mean, it's, and I'm not saying anything, they might have their place, and there's how many different solar places are, I, you know, I don't know. But I just know what was done out there, and where we put them is a mistake. So. But, oh, we, we gotta work with what we've got, so. But, uh, and, and that's, you know, where I come into priority. You could have took the money that was spent over there, the two point seven million, and spent it on the freeway out there, and what could we have had? And the tax off the business that you brought in would have paid for the solar panels. You wouldn't have had to pay nothing out of your pocket. So, that's the kind of priority things that I'm talking about. I mean, you know, and that's with a lot of things. I always try to think what we could put in to pay for what we're talking about. Buying out of our pocket, find a way to pay for it, this, you know, where we can keep, keep going. Keep that money in our pocket and keep going. But, uh, I've said enough. I won't, I'll shut up. But I appreciate y'all's time. Uh, now, is anybody here from the library? Police Department, Chief Keith Graham.
Good evening, everybody. Hope everybody had a good month, last month. I know that for the police department, you'll see our numbers in front of you. We had an extremely busy month. Our officers were very proactive. They've written thirty tickets in la, in February, which is more than they did threefold the month previously in January and December and November. So we've got some officers on the street right now that are actually being very productive and getting out there and working. Now, we've had some focus, uh, traffic stuff we dealt with, with loud exhaust on cars and loud music. And we've written some citations for that, and that's starting to see an effect on everybody. Uh, so, that's my numbers for last month. Anybody have any questions?
Motion.
Uh, the second part of it is, I need to see if I can get a motion to approve us selling four of our patrol units. On the sheet, you should have, it should have four patrol cars. They need to be listed for sale on gun deals. Each of the cars have mechanically served their purpose, but the maintenance cost is costing way too much for us to dump any more money into. Might as well get money out of them by selling and repurposing that money for the PD.
Well, some of this other stuff you wanting to sell, like the light bars?
Yes, sir.
Radio equipment?
We have in the storage behind here, we have multiple light bars from old police cars that cannot be used anymore. Turn around, sell them. Uh, the consoles for the Dodge Chargers that we pulled out and some of the Crown Victorias, which they don't even make anymore. They're sitting back there. Need to purge what we have instead of holding on to it. It's money that smaller agencies or somewhere across the country could use. Might as well sell it, get some money out of it, turn it back into more equipment we can use in the PD. Anything that's serviceable, we're still gonna keep and repurpose if we can.
Motion from Sean to go along with this. Four cars in the stuff, second by Wendell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
And my final topic of discussion, which goes along with what the mayor was saying with how we are as a police department. We met with jail standards today, and jail standards has ninety-nine percent assured us that we will be approved to open our jail come, uh, April first.
Yay.
So, uh, if you have not been over to the police department, I know several have, but the ones that have not and the new ones, please come over to the police department and see the work that's been put in.
Yeah, I encourage everybody to go by and look. Busy.
It looks totally different from when I started nine months ago to now. We've put in a lot of the work ourselves. The only thing we've really had to pay outside resources are, is either for, for electrical work, some plumbing work, just minor little things. Otherwise, the officers in the city, trustees have all put their time and effort in to getting it to where it's at. And the place looks amazing.
So you'll have dispatchers and?
No.
Not at all. We're working toward that later, maybe.
We, uh, we'll have four jailers. We have two right now that are in background, so if they pass, we'll look at hiring them.
How many can you hold?
We will hold twelve maximum. Anything over twelve, that means we have to hire an extra jailer on each rotation, so we go from four jailers to eight jailers.
Yeah.
And right now, it's just not feasible for us to be able to do that.
But we still got a back sale that we hadn't painted fixed yet. And as we grow into that, then we can hold probably eight more.
Probably, probably. Uh, yes, sir.
Are we gonna be eligible for any programs, three oh nine, anything like that?
In the long term, yes. Uh, I'm gonna get with probation and parole and some state agencies, uh, about holding some of theirs since we will be a twenty-four hour facility. We're limited on what we can hold, but there's some options. Uh, tonight at six P M., Carlisle's having a public meeting about closing their jail. I've already told the other chiefs in the county that we are more than happy to hold whoever you wanna bring to us at a certain rate per day. So, Cabot's closed. Carlisle is now getting ready to close, it looks like, but England, they're gonna continue theirs.
Do you have a state mandate of what we can charge?
I will have to get the answer on that because I don't know what the minimum is.
Right.
But I know we can kind of end up charging what we want within reason. I think most of the state's been paying about forty dollars a day, if my math is right. So, we'll probably be somewhere in that ballpark. And our costs are gonna be less since we are teaming up with county to provide meals. The jail standards gentleman today was, were very impressed with everything and documentation that we have. Wrote a twenty-eight page rules and policy procedure kind of today, or this weekend. And they were impressed with all of it. And they're ready for us to see it open. We want to see it open and hopefully provide some safety for our community.
I, I had something I wanted to ask him about. Because I'm, I'm not sure, I, I live over behind the new car wash. You've probably got my husband's name on your wall over at the jail. He calls so, so much because of the noise and the radios, okay. And we had an incident today. Now, when we call, they answer at the sheriff's office, right?
Right.
Because she said, let me send you somewhere else. So since she transferred the call and it went somewhere else. So my husband was looking, and the police car pulled up and just kind of drove through and didn't do any, and I thi, I don't think it was the sheriff's car. I think it was one of the city's. I don't know. And, uh, didn't stay. People turned the radio off as soon as he left. My husband walked outside. The guys that, there were two vehicles every day. They come over and they're waving at him like this, I ha, ha, ha. So Pat goes in and he calls again. So they send another car, and I think it, it was like a SUV or something that came. They never got out of the vehicle, nothing. And I told him, I says, you watch this. I took my phone and I walked across that lot and crossed that ditch and climbed that hill, and I took, I took those guys' pictures. And I said, I'm on city council and I'm fixing to take this to them tonight because we've had about enough. We've got a noise ordinance. Why don't they put something at that car wash that says, turn your radios off? It rattles my windows.
Being a private business, they're gonna have to post those type regulations. I've talked to the owners a couple of times.
Yeah, we have too. We have too.
They're aware of it. We can't force them, unfortunately.
Had somebody gotten out of the vehicle, they, I think they could have made a good marijuana fest.
Officers did, officers did, uh, talk to both times. They did talk to individuals at the vehicles. The second time I know they did, uh, the first time I believe.
I wasn't sure that, I don't think they got out. They might have rolled down their windows and.
I think they stopped, first time they stopped and called. The second time, she did actually get out, the, 'cause she was a different officer. She came up and actually.
Yeah, but they were two, and, yeah, they were, they were kind of smart guys, but, you know, it, it's, it's bad. It gets bad over there. And, you know, I didn't know what to do. We call and then it takes ten minutes. By the time they're there, they're either gone or they see them coming, and then they turn everything.
And that's where hopefully, we have two people that we did, uh, conditional offers to hire this week. So, one one last week, one this week. That's gonna help us get more officers on the street. My goal's to have two officers per shift at all times, and we are slowly getting to that.
We gotta send them to academy or anything.
Right, these are all certified. We're still in all the officers from Jacksonville, so we're taking them, gonna use them, and put them.
We need the jail, eh? We need the jail.
April first is, is my date unless the commission tomorrow meets, and they say no.
Should we move that to April the second?
No, I want it on April Fool's Day. I've been working hard for that. I've been telling the mayor about it. So, the commission meets tomorrow, so I'll have an answer tomorrow evening. If not, either Wednesday, Thursday with all the paperwork signed, and I'll also do that, so, you're good. I encourage everybody to come out and take a look at the police department.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all.
Thank you. Now, uh, Jonathan's not here. He's got his hands full. Jonathan Curry's our new parks and, uh, mosquito director. Yeah, I don't know if they had ballgames tonight or what, but he's trying to find help and, yeah, it's kind of, which as y'all know, Evan left, went to Burnet, and he hadn't been here but like two weeks, Jonathan hadn't, and he's, they was right in the middle of signing kids. I mean, it's been like a whirlwind, but. I'm sure he'll have lots to say when he get to see. As far as I know, everything's going good, though. He's been getting, uh, team sponsors and he's, he got everything. He's getting, doing good so far. He's a fire department chief, Justin Whittenburg.
Uh, he left on a call, too.
Yeah.
Oh.
Community centers, community centers next.
I was going out with him about the butts I had up there, but.
He'll be here in a minute.
Okay. Uh, on the public works, Director Robert Sullivan.
You skipped the community center.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Director Mike Graham. I'm sorry. I got carried away. Didn't help, I could see.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the, uh, I hit my twenty-third year, uh, with the, uh, with the city.
That don't sound right, does it?
I was, uh, uh, a lot of years younger and a lot of, uh, pounds lighter. So, uh, you know, it's been good for twenty, twenty-three, hopefully go, uh, a few more. Uh, memberships, uh, we, you know, we reached that, uh, thousand, uh, member mark one time a couple of months ago, and it, I mean, it's keep, keeps roller coastering, and we're at nine oh three. Uh, had a, a decent month, uh, had to pay a lot in insurance, almost twenty thousand in insurance for the month, so that didn't do us any favors. Our events, Baptist Health, on the twenty-sixth of, uh, this month. Uh, member of the month is, uh, Jonathan Clark, so if you see Jonathan, congratulate him. Uh, and a, a new deal that we're doing this year, uh, windows of opportunity. Uh, we're having a senior dance, uh, on the twenty-eighth. Uh, so if you're, I think it's fifty-five and over, uh, please come, uh, and dance with us, uh, dance with them.
I just did. Is it the senior class or is it us? It's us. It's us.
Uh, the spring break, we have a basketball camp, which you know we have. For April, we're doing a develop, developmental basketball league where we'll spend time with the kids developing, uh, good drills and skills. Uh, pickleball, uh, going pretty strong. We had a group that went over to England uh, last week, and they come back not winning, so. We gotta, uh, but it, it, it picks up every week. Line dancing, we, you know, we, we still have that, and game night on Tuesday night, uh, from six thirty to eight. My, uh, one, one action item for the month is, uh, last year, if you remember, we bought new equipment. And I don't know how this slipped by me. I was so wild on the way the equipment looked and looks real great. We got new flooring. Show them up there one day and looked, and I'm like, we're missing something. Uh, it's, we got those old racks, old weight benches that stands out. Like, I don't, like I said, I don't know how I missed them, but, uh, we, I would like for the council to approve of purchasing, uh, new racks and accessories to match what we've al, already have at a, uh, cost of fifteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-two cents from, uh, Second Chance Fitness, and they're an approved tip step vendor. Uh, and then we'll, you know, we'll have a tuxedo on and it'll look, it'll, I mean, it all coordinate together right now, but, uh, it's, it's a, it's a sort of, um, and I said, put some pictures on, on high looks. I think we've had some of those probably for twenty-three years.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Vaughn. Motion from Raymond to spend the fifteen, five eighty-six, sixty-two.
Okay.
Second, uh, Sean, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Motion carried.
And, uh, uh, last month, and I, I wonder with the, with the pool, I've lost one lifeguard left, so, uh, I, if you know any young people that wanna work, uh, we need, I need good, dependable, uh, folks, young people. I would like to have some adults so we can, uh, staff a pool, uh, properly, uh, for the summer and from now on. And they'll fill out applications and get with me. You know, you gotta, uh, be certified, which I've got, uh, uh, some people that'll come to, come to our house and, and do it. Uh, so if you know anybody, send them my way.
How much would that pay for, say, a teenager who's gonna work part-time during the summer?
Uh, it's to be determined, uh, but, you know, it costs, I think, three hundred dollars to get, uh, certified, but I want good kids that.
Yeah.
Mike, what about what we talked about, like for the lifeguards? Yeah, we were talking. Yeah, we were talking at his office and the kids that don't have the money, we thought it would get a lot more participation. If we done, kinda like we do the police officers, their license is what, three fifty?
Uh, lifeguard, three, three hundred.
Uh, but if the city could pay for it, long as they would sign something saying they would work. You know, for a certain amount of time, whatever y'all determine. And we felt like we'd get more participation, cause a lot of kids don't have three hundred dollars to take a test. And I, you know. Uh, what do y'all think?
Can we do that with part-time employment?
I'd be more concerned about having a contract with a kid.
Right, I mean, I mean underage, right, yeah.
And I mean, it sounds like a great concept, but maybe we should explore that a little bit further to see if, see if that's possible. Cause I know there may be some wage and hour stuff, but, but Cindy may wanna. We may have wanted, wanted to talk and explore it and then um, just.
Well, that's why I brought it up. I didn't know.
I think it's a great idea. Let's just figure out if we can.
Right, and it would give them plenty of lifeguards. So, yeah, if you would look into that for us and see if we can come up with something.
Yeah, and uh, right now the uh, minimum wage and w- once we get this batch. Like I said, I'm all, I'll determine on, on what we'll, you know, what we'll, we'll pay. Uh, cause they've got uh, more responsibility.
Right.
Uh, you know. Our main job is to, you know, not let anything happen and if something happens, save a life, so a lot more responsibility.
Mike, you say even three hundred dollars?
Three hundred.
If you get someone that wanna do it, I'll pay for it. I'll pay for it myself.
There you go. So we might could get more donations and pay for a few kids to take it.
Is it three hundred per person or can you go to? Okay.
So.
And I've, I've got a uh, firm that'll come out and, and uh. Do the lessons. They, they do it a little different. It's, a lot of it is, it used to be classwork. Inside the building, but now you, you don't probably a lot of it online and then you come in and take the swim skills stuff.
Would you, is it eighteen or twenty-one where you don't have to worry about?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Well, I mean, an eighteen-year-old can contract without having some sort of guardian or parent involved in it and all that, okay.
And I need uh, I need some twenty-one-year-olds, eighteen-year-olds. Not a whole lot of fifteen, well, fifteen-year-olds.
No, no.
And you know, i- it's a good part-time job for somebody, an adult that uh, you know, likes water.
Right.
Like, you know, like dealing with kids.
Uh, well, we'll try to make it better. Any other questions for mine? Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Now, fire department.
Alright, good evening, everyone.
Uh, last month we had fifty-five calls, uh, forty of them medical calls, fifteen of them fire-related calls.
Eight of them were overlapping and we're on a same average of twenty-two minutes thirty-nine seconds. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, now, public works, Director Robert Sullivan.
Last month we had four water leaks and I tapped one through my. And about ten minutes of all the things.
Hello, moto.
Catch him, I got a water leak.
That's, that summed it up. I'm just glad all the code withers out of here hopefully.
Yeah. Hopefully we'll be getting with uh, the chicken. They got me a final deal on the, they talked to you about the dog course.
No, sir.
Well, we'd, they'd probably be contacting you because they were. Making some changes out there and they've got transportation, water, fire, and all, you know, what we talked about.
Yeah.
And uh.
I think I told them we were bothering them.
Yeah, I just, we're gonna make sure we're not missing up where they want to be. I don't know where their entrances are or. So that's what they gotta clarify to get. Any other questions, guys?
Has Justin looked at that stuff on the water, on the fire hydrant?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, he's gotta look at it too, cause. Yeah, I, I called and made sure I was right on how far apart they were, but. We can do a little less if it's gonna interfere with some plans that got. Alright, well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Got any questions about it? I'm missing it right last year, but. I don't know, I'm looking at the end. Now it's about a little bit more, two hundred more. Any questions? Now, leave the wind on track.
It's in the packet, but if you look at the one that was on, on top of the packets, that's the one that's been revised as of today. Just gotta do a little correction to it. It's the one that was with the ordinance that was on top of, of your, his logs, yeah.
He does have the proper insurance. I said, proper list of his insurance. He's already said that. I thought that was a little much, but I was wrong. They said that's fine.
Just to explain a little bit on that, we, for consistency, I use the trash con- uh, contract as sort of a guide for that. So some of the things about looking, you know, seeing what his books were and things like that were more for the trash contract because with the trash contract, we've got trash and recycling and one of the big concerns from the old administration was, uh, which is a, a common concern, is that oftentimes there's not a market for someone to buy the recycling. And so a lot of times a trash company will have a hard time getting rid of the recycling in an actual recycling bin. So they were trying to make sure that it was actually being recycled instead of just throwing back with the regular trash and taking to the dumpster. And it's probably less of a concern for us with Randy and, and this, because he's gotta have his own uh, place to take the leaf and limb stuff and all that. So uh, we took out some of that stuff that was similar to the trash contract, so. You'll see that this new one probably makes a little more sense given Randy's business and what we're expecting of him, so. And then the ordinance is just an ordinance accepting that contract and allowing us to go forward with it. So there's a couple of options. If y'all wanted to put the ordinance on the table, we could do that and I could read the ordinance and the contract or I could hit high points or just on the contract, but I do have to read the ordinance, though.
Wait, before we accept the contract and read the ordinance?
Motion for Sean to accept according to the contract and read the ordinance. Second. Second by Raymond, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, carry.
Yeah, ordinance number eight twenty-three, an ordinance granting the sole and exclusive franchise license and privilege to Phillips Auction and Salvage to provide uh, bulk yard waste collection and disposal services for the city of Lone Oak, Arkansas and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Lone Oak, Arkansas, the city advertised and received bids for the performance of bulk, bulk yard waste collection and disposal services for the city. Whereas Phillips Auction and Salvage submitted the lowest responsible bid for the performance of bulk yard waste collection and disposal services for the city. And whereas the city council for the city recommended that the city accept the bid of Phillips Auction and Salvage and the mayor did allow, did follow the council's recommendation by awarding the bulk yard waste collection and disposal contract to Phillips Auction and Salvage. And whereas it is the desire of the city to grant the exclusive franchise license and privilege to Phillips Auction and Salvage perform bulk yard waste collection and disposal services to the city. Pursuant to the specifications and terms and conditions of the documents provided to Phillips Auction and Salvage prior to submitting a bid. Now therefore it be ordained by the city council of the city of Lone Oak, Arkansas, one, that Phillips Auction and Salvage. Oops, sorry, I got a little error in there where it says green environmental services of Arkansas, that, that part will come out as the, the final one. Uh, that Phillips Auction and Salvage is hereby granted and awarded the sole and exclusive franchise license and privilege as the lowest responsible bidder for the performance of bulk yard waste collection and disposal services for the city pursuant to the terms and conditions contained in the contract attached here too as exhibit A. Number two, that by the acceptance of the license and privilege and the actual performance of the bulk yard waste collection and disposal services for the city. Phillips Auction and Salvage and the city accept and agree to be bound by the terms of the specifications and contract documents attached here too. Number three, that because bulk yard waste collection and disposal is necessary for the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of the city of Lone Oak. The approval of the contract between Phillips Auction and Salvage constitutes an emergency, which is hereby declared and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage. And just to hit the high points on it, he, he's supposed to pick up weekly, uh, the, the yard waste. Uh, and he'll, he'll set a schedule and how he's gonna do it with the city and, and all that and he'll, and will notify the citizens in a, in a water bill with what, what day they have for that. Uh, there's certain holidays that are just normal city type holidays that are in there, but he'd have to then do it within um, uh, forty-eight hours of, of a holiday like that. Um, or, or if there's any sort of weather, he'd have to do it within forty-eight hours of a storm or something like that that kept him from doing it on the normal day. Uh, just trying to be reasonable about that kinda thing. Um, on page five, or two, paragraph five rates, it's ten dollars and fifty cents per month on each customer's water bill issued in the city. So sometimes people will have more than one water bill, like one for their, for their water and then one for like a sprinkler system or whatever. And so this is ten dollars and fifty cents per customer, not per bill. Um, because it's just gonna be one yard with one set of waste, so it didn't really make sense to have somebody that had more than one have to pay more than, more than once. And for storing debris, uh, we don't have a, we just have a, a provision in there that says that uh, we're gonna make a contract with him on that because you know, honestly, that was the hard one. Um, you know, if it's a small storm, maybe he just does it as normal part of collection. If it's a major storm, like what Littlerock experienced, I mean, that's something that he may not be able to handle at all. So it would just have to be on a piece by, piece by piece basis. Um, he's got a disposal site in paragraph seven that we've mentioned that's uh, ADQ certified. And he's gotta let us know if he changes it. Um, he collects between seven AM and six PM, so it's not gonna affect Ms. Janey being upset about that noise on that after a certain time. And uh, let's see, he's gotta provide all the equipment for it, not us. And, and honestly, that's the whole reason we're doing this, because we've had trouble with our equipment. And, and ev- every city's dealing with this too. In fact, Carlisle's about to look at this exact issue. Um, because it's just hard to keep that, it, it, the work is hard on that equipment. Um, and just puts the risk on to Phillips to get it done instead of the city having to keep doing that and use our city folks to, to, to do it. Um, if he steals stuff, he's gotta pick it up. That's in paragraph ten. Uh, he's gonna have any licenses and taxes that he's required to have in twelve. Thirteen was the insurance provision that the mayor was concerned about and that's been cleared with Randy, so he's good with those numbers. Then. The paragraph nineteen talks about some termination if, if things aren't going well, but in, typically it would be a three-year contract. If not for something going poorly where you have to have the termination clause come into effect, so, um, and that's about it. So if y'all have any specific questions about it, um, we took out some of the exception type things that were in the trash contract that really don't apply to Randy's business.
You said it's a three-year or one year for three years? Per year.
Per year.
But you let him know ninety days in advance and we can terminate.
You're gonna set it up like on the schedule like it is now?
Yes, there's a problem.
Oh, yeah.
But to be honest, I mean, we're calling it a three-year contract, but it's, but if there was something wrong with it. Either side can terminate earlier than that. It's just, we don't have to think about it each time. It, it auto renews, but if something's going wrong, then either side could.
Like will there be certain days in certain areas that he's gonna go?
He will give us a.
Yeah.
Schedule, yeah, just like a crash.
That's, that's not within paragraph three where it talks about the schedule. Uh, he may rely on what they used to do on that or he may come up with his own schedule that makes sense for his, his, his deal. So we'll let him decide that and then um, you know, if that ever had to be modified, we just, it'd be something to go out in the water bills to let people know again if something had changed.
So I need to, somebody to accept first reading. I make first reading. Wendell made the motion, accept first reading, second by Sean, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I need to move around second, third reading title only.
I make a motion to read, second reading title only.
Janey, the second, third reading title only.
Second.
Who did? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, carry.
Ordinance of rate twenty-three, an ordinance granting the sole and exclusive franchise license and privilege to Phillips Auction and Salvage to provide bulk yard waste collection and disposal services for the city of Lone Oak, Arkansas and declaring an emergency.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept, second, third reading by Sean. Second by Wendell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
There's not an emergency clause.
Motion, Janey, do the emergency clause. Second by Wendell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to adopt now. Motion to adopt by Sean. Second by Dale, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, carry. Your business. Quotes to repair the uh, KXR eighty excavator. Uh, I got, we got three bids.
Twenty-four eighty-six, twenty-four thirteen.
Yeah.
Really valued, twelve thousand eighty-eight, eighty.
Yeah.
And heavy equipment is.
Seventeen.
Seventeen thousand eight fifty-five, twenty-four.
These bid on the same, same.
Yeah, they're supposed to be on the same parts and all, uh. Any more questions, Figu? He's got a ninety, ninety-day warranty.
Yeah.
Which is pretty standard, some of them.
If you want the motion, we'll need this one to accept.
Yeah, I just need to.
I accept, I accept Figu.
Well, Wendell made a motion to accept Figu's bid.
Oh, second.
Eighty-six, twenty-four, thirteen. Second by Stan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, carry. Now, approval of services agreement with PMI and estimate repairs of wastewater plant, radiation upgrades.
We have a deadline to get this done.
By then, by November. I'm not gonna have a choice. No, we don't have, no, we don't have a choice. I mean. I just, I hope it don't come out, we, which it'll have to be bid out, but. Lord, I hope it's.
So we need to make motion, put it forward to bid it out?
Uh, well, yeah, by accepting it, I guess.
Yeah, accept the proposal and they'll take your.
Motion to accept the proposal.
Motion from Sean to accept the bid from PMI or contract.
Second.
Second by Raymond, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, carry. All opposed, motion carried.
The second deal is the contract that goes along with the.
Yeah.
The chips figured into that.
Right.
Last thing, is it? Yeah.
Motion to accept the estimate.
Motion to accept the contract for Sean. Seconded, seconded by Dale, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried, yeah, I hate that. Take a step forward for having a step back. Yeah, motion to pay bill. Oh, yeah, uh, spring cleanup, if it's alright with y'all, we looked at doing from the nine, April nineteenth through the twenty-sixth. So that'll start on a Saturday and end on Saturday. Is that alright with y'all?
Right.
Talk to James and everybody's, feel good. And they'll put something in the water bill, so April nineteenth through the twenty-sixth will be city cleanup.
Are we only gonna have one city cleanup? I thought that's one of the reasons that we started the trash, where they could use the dumpsters.
It just depends on how, how it goes, I guess.
I liked the two, that was good.
Which, which we started that two dollars on the bill, you can haul stuff out there anytime you want.
Yes, yeah, I like that.
We'll just see how, how plain we did it. I made a motion to pay bill.
I make a motion to pay bill.
Pay bill by Janey, seconded by Sean, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. My plan is only meeting is scheduled for Monday morning, seven thirty to six PM. Sean, seconded by Janey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much.